Yes.
No, it wasn't me. It wasn't me, but they're they're very. Somebody just turned up. There are. I thought like, oh, get one for my house. So that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's true. It is. Well, I saw something on the warrant.
From Judy with an attorney, so I'm very grungy.
Hey, not just that.
No, it's the photo. Something.
That's it.
It's. Yeah, be an age front. Yeah.
As you get along. Welcome, Brian.
Upstairs in the.
These new.
No, it's better quality.
Like that is better quality. I want like filters.
Larry and.
Vaseline on the lens. Then if he's lifted up, they can even see under the table net. Yeah.
Yeah, we put my back.
Well, we could have like a little curtain in front like.
We're we're still working on new tapes.
I was gonna say, almost every town has that bank of. My door. Yes. Right. There's a wooden cabinet in the front. Even really small towns has that. Rockport has one. Yeah, and they have comfy chairs, too.
They were all custom. They were all custom built, too. That's the thing. You can't just buy them on.
I know. We actually have looked. I I didn't believe him when he said it was hard to find them. So I looked and it's really. Plus, we wanted to pay somebody.
Thirty-five thousand.
Wow. We need some town that's closing. I saw the town of Lisbon has a really. All right, well, it's six o'clock. We can start by saying the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And in the state sovereignty. To the republic or which is hands. My nation who calls. Indecible liberty, justice, sorrow. Welcome, everyone. We will make some adjustments to the agenda so that. Nat and the school folks don't have to stick around too long. Um. Do we have any declarations of conflicts of interest?
No.
No. Minutes of the last meeting and also the town meeting, annual town meeting. Do people get a chance to review those?
Good job, Judy.
Did anybody have any changes they didn't already send to Judy? All right, a motion?
It's a move that we approve.
Second. All in favor? That's everybody.
And that's both set? Or that just?
Oh, yeah, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Um, communications. From the public to. Any of us?
Um, I received a few. Emails about um. Drifting beach and uh. Some the chairs that were put out and, you know, I I talked to Judy and, you know. Um. And she understands, you know, sort of the liability of having chairs behind, even, you know, if the barriers do their job, it should be the safest spot on the beach, but um. We can't have them placed in the road. Um. So Judy said that her and Rodney will pull them out after meeting tonight. Um, but, you know, I I do just want to recognize, you know, all the. Work that they do down there, you know, to offer solutions for parking. They clean off the road on their, you know, with their own time and energy themselves. Real, you know, unofficial stewards of the beach. And so I I I recognize that. Appreciate it.
Did you have any other? Communications? So probably you probably need something. I also had an email about. Um, whether or not it was. Okay to have the chairs down at the Driftin Beach. Um. And lots of positive feedback about the grand opening, that the landing, so, yeah.
I had a lot of negative.
You did?
People are now calling it by the nickname, the big parking lot. And I mean, I think you acknowledged sort of the tensions between its different uses and but. And a lot of people who call it the big parking lot actually didn't attend the opening. But it's out there.
Yes, I did have somebody who was there.
Yes.
Talked to me about they wish there were more green space. You know, on the lower lot. And I said that there've been many different configurations that were explored by the. Harbor Committee, and this is how it came out. And. Check out the park that's going up above. But yes, I think that's.
And some people mentioned that there's a sort of lip and then it goes up on a little sidewalk before the wooden. Railing or which people sat on, but there's white lines and maybe this isn't done. There's a white line on the sidewalk and a white line on the actual parking lot. And if you're looking down, the white lines are next to each other, so you can't see that there's a step down. So some people told me they fell.
Oh. Um, we. Now the. Those spots have been painted with. Uh, four hour parking in yellow and straight up against the curb. And so I think it breaks it up a bit and it makes it easier.
Okay. All right.
Yes, falling is not good. Um. Also, I had some inquiries about the Port Clyde General Store status, which. I tell them, we keep hearing they're gonna rebuild and they're eager to get going.
They are. They have some adjusted plans and they've been talking to Terry about those plans. And so they will likely. Go before the planning board to um sort of resubmit plans because they have got some changes made.
And also inquiries about St. George days, which we'll talk about in a little bit. Um. So the warrant for the expenditures, Irene sent us the warrant this afternoon. I was thrilled to see that we got our. Money from the feds.
Yes. I reimbursed my thing, and so I did. Transfer the money that was due.
Seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Uh.
Was that the whole amount?
The seven, no, the seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars is the amount that. Was taken out of the general fund. To. Cover expenses that we didn't have enough money for.
For cold storage.
Over the ten cold storage road. And I. I reimbursed, okay, because the money from the federal government came in, I reimbursed the general fund. That money.
So what was the um total that came in?
Over one point one million.
Okay.
So that other four hundred plus went into the cold storage account.
Yeah, just eight and a ten cold. When the grant money comes, uh, grant reimbursement comes in, it goes directly into the ten cold storage road account. So the seven hundred and twenty thousand I. Moved transferred into the general fund, reimbursed the general.
And Brandon, am I correct in thinking that we can use money un- unspent on the actual construction for future maintenance?
No.
No.
Can't.
No, it's essentially the only thing that we can use. Unspent bond money on is paying off the bond early, so.
Oh, well, that wouldn't hurt either.
No, it will save a ton of money in in interest.
Yeah.
You know, well over a hundred thousand dollars in interest.
Oh, we can use it.
Yeah.
So um. That is the plan.
Yes.
Right. Um. Let's see. I had one question about. Um, Fred Brewer's bill.
Is for the twenty twenty-two audit.
Is that what we were expecting it to be?
Yes.
Okay. And. Also, I see um Mr. Leslie's bill. But this isn't the whole amount we're paying him, right? This was just.
So uh, that was not the first. We got us the second. That that was twenty-five, right?
Yes.
He we paid fifty first. And so what happens is. Nat and the Lighthouse Group. They come in and they drop off a check. We deposit the check. Leslie invoices us. We uh. Then pay Jim Leslie.
Okay.
That way, if the FEMA funds do come through, we have invoices that we can collect reimbursement on.
Okay.
Rather than just having the Lighthouse pay for it directly.
Right. Good thinking.
And so I believe that there's um. There are two more payments. Just one.
I hope.
We check, right.
Did anybody else have questions about the treasurer's warrant?
No.
Are we okay with approving these then?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we can sign that. Are you?
Can I sign it, Ernest?
Yeah, definitely.
Well, it says add Brian to one extraordinary solution.
But that's a different thing.
Okay.
We'll talk about it.
He has seen this once. I've emailed it to him.
You're legit.
Yeah, you should add him to your. List of people to get stuff.
I sent you.
He had, he now has a town email account.
I I sent it to you.
Okay.
Yes.
Um. Which means you have to check the town email account now, but.
Where do I?
You'll get used to it. Nobody told you about it? Okay. Well, you have a new town email. It's a um St. George email address. And one reason it's a good idea is that. And we will discuss this momentarily. Occasionally, there are freedom of information requests for public records, including emails from the town. And if all of our town um communications happen on those emails. Then nobody's ever gonna be looking at your personal email account for anything.
Official.
All right, um. Did anybody have any public comments for? Issues not on the agenda tonight? Nat, did you wanna? Make your.
Yeah, because I wanted to let you know the end is in sight. Um, construction is finished just about. We're opening the grounds on the walkway. On this coming Friday, the twentieth. And I'll have to say that Mr. Leslie. Has done an extremely fine job. Um. He. Put sports around all the. All pillars. And built them a little bigger. And then took. Um, rebar and down into. The lower ground. And then. There are stainless steel supports going around the wood on the railing that go into the support. So. I think that we're pretty stable for the wire. And I just want to appreciate everything the town helped with. And we're looking forward to having the forest numbers back.
Wow, it's wonderful. And it's wonderful for your. Organization to take on the fundraising. You know, to cover it.
Yep.
Um, you all do such a great job for a wonderful town asset.
And finding a first-rate guy to do it.
We're very lucky.
Yeah.
But that's what he does. He's probably worked on. Forty or fifty of the main lighthouses. He's also worked on uh restorations of historic houses. And uh, if you saw his crew and the determination and. And the expertise that they they have, it's. It's it's amazing. He's had them around for a while. And we were lucky he was able to free five guys out of Bywell Haven. And that's what. Got us to where we are this this coming week, so.
Yeah, that's pretty fast work.
That's amazing.
Yeah, great.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know, Chris.
Yes, thank you. So next, um. We'll talk about the. Bond resolution. That was circulated. Um.
Yeah, everybody saw a copy of it. And so. That should all look very familiar. It, there's nothing new in there. It's just um. Sort of a a piece that is needed um by the bond banks. Were there any? Questions on that?
So was this language, Mike, um. Provided by the main. Bond bank or your attorney? Okay. Um, they require something like this, obviously.
Yeah, um, I I called the bond bank and talked to them and they had sent information. They had to send to the attorney who's our bond counsel. And he said, and she, he said, we go, we go through him now. So I called him. He said, this is the next us.
Okay.
And I can sign it, so I just need a vote of approval.
Is there any discussion about it? All right.
I'm gonna make your first motion, Brian. This one. You know.
I'll I'll move the. And then authorize Brandon to sign this document.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, um. And then we're gonna add to the agenda tonight, um, the requests that we received. For um information, which. If you didn't know, you had a town email account. You probably haven't seen this yet, Brian. Um, just today, Brandon received. A letter from a lawyer requesting information about. The um. The bond. Vote that we that was held for. The um heating and cooling. Borrowing that the town is doing on behalf of the school. And I'm assuming. That this. Is some lawyer for like the main bond bank that now?
No, I talked with the main bond bank. They get the same fill-up request.
Yeah.
Um, and they're unhappy about it. Um, so it's, the letter is from an attorney. The client is undisclosed. It is not from the main bond.
Okay.
Um, it, I don't know. Who exactly is doing this? Uh, I sent to our attorney. I've already talked on the phone with him today. I think what they're trying to assert is that it had to go to a referendum vote, the bond approval. But, you know, I talked to our attorney about this before because we're a municipal school district that can be approved at a a district budget meeting, which is also a town meeting. Uh, I confirmed that with him today. So. Um, I sent a variety of documents related to the district budget meeting and the vote on this to the attorney. He's drafting a response to this. Um, and his response is essentially gonna say, here are the key documents. Here's the statute. If you need further information, please let us know. Um, because I prefer all of you and all of us not to have to spend our time digging through every email that references the bond vote. Um, so I I talked to a variety of people about this today, including the bond bank. Um. The attorney's gonna draft that letter. Um. If it's all, I talked to Brandon and and I I can send it and CC you all and say, here is the response from the municipal town. Um, and he'll draft a form, but I'll share that with Brandon.
Yeah, I want to send us the draft before it goes. And um.
Absolutely.
And I think. It's probably worth including. The minutes from the school board where you talked about this and the town. Meeting, you know. I mean, obviously, it appears that the most important things they're looking for for are the notices. That the public received. About voting for this borrowing.
Yeah.
Um. And one thing that I said to Brandon. You know, it. Tara can provide an affidavit that says when she posted. The warrants.
And I have that. There's she does a citizens return.
Okay.
And I have that. I sent that to the attorney.
Okay.
So the attorney told me, send me these documents.
Right.
So I sent that to him. So before anything goes out, I'll send you the letter with all the attachments so you can.
So there's nothing missing that you need from us?
No.
Great.
No, I have everything.
It's. And it's an odd thing.
You never know what is coming down the road.
No, I mean, I I have some suspicions on where.
Sure.
It's coming from. Um, and it's. Yeah, it it's. It's unfortunate that we're dealing with this because it's it's taking time and money um for a non-issue. Um, and it's. Yeah, it's it's frustrating, but.
But at this point, it's really not gonna hang up with process, right?
No, I I I don't foresee.
Or delay it.
An any issue with it.
Yeah.
Now, we're like, we've already. You know, I moved for the bond bank. We've signed the contract, like they're gonna start working into this month, so. Um, and, you know, we were, I I've talked, the attorney's been with us through every step of this, so. And the issue that they're bringing up with the referendum, I brought up that up to the attorney, just I want to double check, triple confirm. This is the case. He said, yes. And I think the confusion is if you're an RSU. Like RSU thirteen of your uh. SAD School Administrative District. If you're that structure, you do have to do a referendum vote. If you're a municipal school district, you don't. So I think that's where the person's confusion is.
Right.
Why they're bringing this up and trying to cause an issue around it. Again, I have my suspicions. Um. And it's not for the best reasons, but. Um, I'm I'm confident that. You know, we'll deal with this. We've got a really good attorney. He does this all the time, so. But I'll keep going in a little bit. You know, the goal, my goal is to have that letter drafted and get get that to you, you know, by the end of the week.
Well, and I think we all did learn this spring with this borrowing and other issues. That the relationship of a municipal school unit to the town is different than a freestanding like RSU or whatever. And I think that um. For us to work together more closely on all financial issues and for the public to be clear. On the relationship. I don't know what this person's agenda is, but maybe that will help um people understand.
Oh, I think transparency and collaboration.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you for um. Taking care of that.
Thank you for uh for the time. Appreciate it. We'll get.
That's.
Thank you for moving us one more step ahead than we didn't even expect.
Yeah, that, like Steve said, it's the things that come out of nowhere, right? Well, thank you. I mean, you can stay or you can go.
I got another meeting.
Okay.
See y'all later. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Good up there, Brian. Keep it going. You know, it's your first movement.
So um. Because we did have um a vacant seat. Recently filled by Brian. Welcome. Um, we do have some organizational meeting. Things that we need to attend to tonight, um, some of which are even duplicative, you know, from last. Month. Um. But the first of those is that we should elect a chair and a vice chair for the select board. And um. So what are people's thoughts about? Who should serve as chair? Who should serve as vice chair? What are people?
Do Brian?
Then I think Jane's doing great job.
I agree. I nominate Jane Conrad to be re-elected chair of the select board.
Second. All in favor? All right, I'm willing.
Thank you.
But we need a vice chair because, you know, I. Once in a while, I'll go on vacation. Could be run over by a truck. You just never know. Um.
No, we don't want to get that.
So. Co-chairs. But so we just need someone who can. Serve in that role and be the backup.
I'm willing.
Are you?
If you want me to be vice chair, would only be filling in if you're not available, right?
She gets run over by a truck. If I'm run over by a truck, you could revisit who's gonna be chair, vice chair. You'd be electing a new person.
Dominate Stephen as vice chair.
Okay. I'll second that. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. All right, we're done with that.
It's a first motion down in history.
There you go.
Go.
Um, even though it seems. Pro forma, we are supposed to decide tonight. On our meeting dates and times. I would propose that we keep this. Time of six o'clock on a Monday. Every other Monday, if you think that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay. Um, that way we can get on the town calendar. The meetings um for the coming year, so.
Just have a quick thing to point out for Brian's. Um, enlightenment. The reason we meet at six is we used to meet at seven, but after a couple of hours, Brendan noticed we were sort of nodding off. You guys kind of.
I I know, I like it. I love meeting at six.
Yeah.
Um. Especially in the winter when it's nights are so long.
It's.
Um. So then. Well. You and I or. Bill Batty or whatever, we can look at the year and if there are holidays or whatever, we'll figure it all out. But then they'll be on the town calendar. We'll be all set. So for these, um, we have these three policies. That um, just so you know, Brian, um. Main law allows for one select board person to come in and sign and authorize Irene to pay bills, but there are only three kinds that one select person. Can sign on. And those are payments to the state, payments to the school, and payment to the town's employees. So um, the three. Select board policies that we are looking at tonight are to add your name. Instead of Van's name, so that. You know, if somebody needs to come in and sign. You could answer the email. She sends out emails usually on a Tuesday. Depends, but. And usually I'm close and can get here, but not always. So um, I'll make a motion that we approve as a select board policy, the treasurer's disbursement warrants for payment of state fees. By this group.
Second.
All in favor? And I'll make a motion that we also approve. Um, that one of us could come in and sign the municipal school warrant dispersment.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Five. And finally, um, I'll make a motion that we can come in and sign. Payments to the town employees.
I get it.
All in favor? That's five. Okay, thank you. Um.
I have a quick question about that one. Um, my wife works for the town on the ambulance crew.
Yeah.
So would it be not code fit for me to sign on that one if I had to? Chances of me getting in here during business hours, aren't they?
Right.
So it didn't really matter, but.
I suppose.
Clear on.
I suppose that's true. Um, even though everybody's lumped together. But um. So if it's one of, if it's an employee one, you can just send it to the whole group. But um.
I will just stay away from those.
Okay.
That's fine. I just wanted to be.
Now, that's good. It's um important for everybody to understand that. Um. We do have. Um, a select board policy book that's posted on the website. But it's outdated because we have. Last fall and then now.
Um, I read most of it yesterday.
Well, mo- most of those, some of those policies we need to revisit. Um, and some. Have been superseded, but that is something. We need to work on, Brandon.
Yeah, I'll, as soon as we have an up-to-date uh manual, we'll put it on.
Yeah, well, I mean, what I need from Tara or somebody is every one of those in a Word document. And then. We'll update. The ones that need updating. And then you can put them in a new packet. Or whatever, upload them.
I thought we had this conversation and agreed to keep it. It's just one manual.
But that's why since November, it has. There, it's been outdated. And that's not. Okay, really. What's on the. Website should be what is, what the policies really are today. So that's, we just need to make that happen.
Well, even our own website, or your own website policy. Does include a a disclaimer, so to speak.
No, but I don't think there's any one. If someone came into the town office, they would not get. All the current policies. So we we just need.
Yeah, they would. Tara has a a hard copy.
I'd be surprised if it didn't. Is she printing out like the ones that we signed last month and replacing the ones in the booklet with the new ones? I doubt it. The ones from November, did she replace those in her?
In the ball, I believe so. I don't.
So.
There was something last month, so anyway.
Just, we'll just make sure we're on top of this. We need to be on top of this. Um. And we know that there are some policies that are sort of in the works. Like an artificial intelligence policy and things. So I think that we should kind of. Go through the list and pick a few that will do this one this month and this one that month and. Bring them all up to date.
I will say, that is a system that is. Gonna make it less likely that the correct version is always online if it's changing every month, as opposed to updating it at the beginning of a year.
Except that. When we updated them in November. It didn't turn into an updated booklet. So you can't have it both ways.
I I think I'm only asking for one way. I'm asking for one booklet that's not updated. Every other month or every month, but instead at the beginning of the year, those are your policies for the year. We know at the beginning, you know, in every July. You all review the policies. Make whatever revisions need to be made. And it gets put on the website. I just think i- if it is. I just think i- if it is continually changing throughout the year. That's.
Right.
One strange practice for policy, I think, but two, it is more likely that the, the up-to-date version is not going to be on the.
I understand that, but I think, given the amount of discussion you'd have for even three policies, not like the ones tonight. But let's say the artificial intelligence policy, um, uh, social media policy or whatever, several. Those are gonna take a fair amount of time, and if there are twenty-five policies. You're not gonna get them all done in one meeting, whatever. So, well, we don't need to have a long discussion of this now. But, and I agree with you that it'd be good to get them all done as soon as possible. And then we have a booklet and then you could post it personally. I don't see why it's so complicated to have twenty-five separate documents. That you could have those be the policies.
Because right now you can find all of the select board policies in one place. You can pull up the manual and you see everything that governs this board. I think that's.
Except they're outdated by a year, so then.
That, that, that part is easy to fix, but once they're all broken into twenty-three separate documents, if somebody wants the, the policies that govern this board. We have to.
You'd have to look them up individually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I mean, really.
Any other thoughts?
It.
No, I don't like when mom and dad fight.
Really, this is up to you all. I mean, it, they're, they're your own policies. Well, I know, let me finish. What I'm trying to make recommendations on are, you know, I, the, the administration of it. The, you know, i- if, if the website is going to be held to this standard. I'm trying to let folks know what may work best to make sure that your policies are always up to date.
Well, is there some sort of happy medium that if there's gonna be one document, if there's other changes during the year. Can there be some part right next to the one booklet? But say these changes have been made in twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six. Be, and then at some point you go back and update the whole document. But at least there'd be a source of the new information online.
I think that is a very good suggestion.
Very good idea, like a note attached.
Right, and say, these have been updated, but the full packet hasn't been.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll shoot for that.
Very soon, if somebody wants to see the updated policy, they could just come into the town office and get a copy of whatever they want.
Wait, and you could have it online and somebody could just click on it. It just wouldn't be part of the whole packet yet.
Yeah, right, but Pammy's asking.
Yeah.
And that's was my question to Brandon. Maybe, yeah, maybe Tara has a book that includes the November updates. But I'm not, I certainly didn't give them to her if she found them, you know. Or you gave them to her.
What were the November updates? I can double check.
Look at your emails for me in November, because when we talked about this, you acknowledged that. We hadn't uploaded the um.
Well, we were getting a new website in January.
That's right. That's part of why some of this stuff got. But we just need to do it. So another organizational meeting thing is for us to decide who's gonna be the liaison to different committees. Um, and I looked through, I'll continue to do the budget committee, emergency services. The TIF committee and the comprehensive plan committee. Um. Wendy will do resilience, planning board. Board of appeals and scholarship, although we can revisit scholarship in the spring. Um, so, and um, Steve. You're okay doing it with the conservation commission still.
I'd be delighted to continue as long as Ken will spot me tonight to report, because I left all my notes at home.
Um, I wondered if you'd be willing to do the solid waste committee?
Me?
Yes, because um, we're, there's gonna be a little, at least the, here's what I was wondering. Is that um, Tammy, you do the selfish committee. Um, and the cemetery committee. And you do solid waste. Um, but you also go to the school board meetings, right?
I zoom in.
Or zoom in. And I was, I was thinking that, you know, we've had discussions about, you know, that. Technically, the school board is called the school committee. We've talked at this group about, do we or do we not need a liaison to the school? But if you're going anyway, we may as well have you be a liaison. And then. You can help with the lines of communication with the school. And then you, then you'll have three, and that's why I was thinking. Steve could go to solid waste, which she's an early riser, and I know those meetings are seven-thirty in the morning.
Oh, that was the thinking.
Did you hear what she said?
No.
They've actually changed their meeting time.
Oh, they did?
They'll be meeting at eight P M. To see if they could bring in any more.
People?
Attendees or committee members.
So what's the new time again?
Three o'clock.
So what do you?
I thought we did, this group decided that they didn't want a liaison to the school board.
So, I think. Couple of things. One is that even this freedom of information request, all the issues that arose this spring. I think it is very important for us to get clarification from Bill Kelly. About the school's responsibilities, the town's responsibilities. For oversight of the school um money. Um, obviously, the school. Board raises, figures out what they need to raise, and they go to the public separate from us. And there's a vote about what they wanna spend money on. But it, I think there's some. There, it would be helpful to have our lawyer and the school's lawyer. Reach an agreement about um, to what extent are we supposed to be. Um. Overseeing any aspect of their finances. I mean, obviously, like with the bond. Because they're a municipal school unit, they could not borrow the money for the heating and cooling, and we had to be the borrower. That's just one example, and we were all kind of taken by surprise. And I think if, if it's, if there's clarity for their board, for us, for Brandon and Irene and the superintendent. And um, her going forward, her finance director, it'll just be easier for all of us. Um, because the, when the school. Became a municipal unit, when they withdrew from RSU thirteen. There's um, a St. George School Administrative Ordinance. That says how they're supposed to run the school. And in there, it says they're supposed to be reporting their finances to the town annually. Um.
I, I, sorry, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but before it goes on too much longer, I. This doesn't feel like great process right now.
Okay.
I'm certain that Jen and Mike, one or the other, would have stayed had they known that this.
But this is, this is just a part of the liaison discussion. So I'm just, that's a long background to. I think we need clarity of our relationship, but I think it would be, if you're going anyway, Tammy. Then it would be helpful to have you um. Serving as, as a liaison. Now, this is just me talking, so I'm curious what other people think.
Well, I can just be the unofficial liaison. I don't have to be official. I think you, Brandon, have developed a good relationship with Mike. And had already decided that you were gonna have more interaction as far as when big issues come up related to finance.
I, I hear Jane's point, and I, I think if after clarity between the relationship. In, between the school and, and, and the town, if after that process. That involves the two attorneys to interpret how municipal school units work. That i- is deemed appropriate, that there's a liaison, then I think that would be the right time to do it, rather than now and then get clarity.
And obviously, any of us can attend the meeting anyway.
Exactly, as voters and.
Right.
It's.
Exactly.
Which is what Tammy does and so.
Right.
I could request a copy of their minutes too. The, the secretary could send you the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, cuz I get, I get the agenda ahead of time. But then I don't see the minutes unless I go on their website and look at them and stuff. That would be good.
I, I will better try with the solid waste.
So are you willing, unless?
You wanna relinquish it. Maybe you wanna keep solid waste.
I'll just do whatever you tell me.
Waste is fun, though.
Tell me when and at what time, and I'll fit it in as good.
Well, but.
I can, well.
I'm, I'm not looking for another committee liaison if you wanna keep it.
Well, I'll stay with it, and if there's an issue, then I will.
Yeah, but guess what? Let me know.
Yeah, okay, all right, then. I only say that cuz then you are going to more than other people, but that's, if you're willing, that's fine.
That's fine.
So then Steve will have conservation commission and housing still, which isn't a formal town.
That's an unofficial.
But it, you're our link to the CDC's housing committee. And then um, Brian will keep Parks and Rec, well, take on Parks and Rec. Are you still gonna be the um, chair of the committee?
You can't, you can't be.
I, I.
I can't be a voting member anymore.
Yeah.
They have agreed to let me still speak. You can be a voting member of Boosters, is that right?
Yeah, I can. That's separate from the town.
And so, yeah. And that I plan on being involved with, cuz they're gonna be dealing with the property quite a bit, I think, so. Cuz they're voting on that right now, the use partnership, so.
Yeah, and you'll wanna make sure those meetings aren't happening at the same time as our meetings going forward.
Yeah, I can go to these partnership meetings.
Yeah.
Well, I normally Parks and Rec meets at the same time.
Yeah.
So it's gonna have to change.
Ashley, Ashley switched it once, but then so did we right after, so.
Right.
It's so cheerful.
It's like a game back and forth.
I did try.
And then um, you're willing to do the harbor committee?
Yes, LeBron.
Um. And then if at any point Tammy, you would like Brian to do the selfish committee or be a backup. To go to that, just obviously he's knowledgeable about that, you know.
I go to the selfish committee more than once, I mean. It's actually pretty interesting about that. I've learned all kinds of stuff. It is interesting.
So St. George is part of um, five towns that have shared ordinances. For managing um, selfish. And it's actually uh, was created by the legislature. And so we have voting representatives from each of the five towns. And um, Jeff Schroeder is our selfish warden. But Tammy goes as our representative to those meetings. Do they happen every month? Um. And then occasionally, the group proposes changes to like the selfish ordinance, which we made some. Yeah, this year, and things like that. Um, but it is interesting.
And then every three years, it changes town. Like it's old, it, before it was here in St. George, and then at the end of the three-year term, it went over to Warren. And then I don't know who it's gonna go, which town it'll go to next.
That'll be hosting the meetings, like Cushing or somewhere?
Well, and taking on like the administrative piece of it as well, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, because we pay. There are shared expenses for this.
We pay them, we pay the town of Warren right now.
Okay.
Because they're taking on the administrative part of that.
Yeah, okay. Um. So, before we talk about the role of a committee liaison, I have in here. The right nominations to the planning board. Wendy, you want?
Yeah, I'll nominate Elaine Taylor as an alternate, Allison Holy Briggs as an alternate, and Ann Cox as a full member. Um, for the next term, the next whatever, how many term?
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? That's everybody. So um, we had talked at one time about having a workshop on our um, relationships. To the committees and the role of a liaison, but our agenda was light enough tonight. That I thought we could just do it at the meeting tonight, so that um. We can all review what the role of the liaison is to the committee. And um. So obviously, one of the important things is. That you're the one reporting back and what the committee is doing. Um, and you're also there to represent the select board at their meeting. So that if there's some way in which they're not following the select board policies or the town charter. Um, you could help get them on track. Um, the example that was kind of the most. Challenging of this was when we had an ad hoc traffic and safety committee meeting. And we voted on five, five people and two alternates. And yet they didn't really behave like a committee. They just had open meetings with anybody who wanted to speak. At which, you know, there was a lot of good discussion that came out of that, and people aired their concerns. But then when we finally pushed them to behave like a committee, they decided they didn't wanna be a committee. Um, so I think. The lesson there was that, you know, uh, early on, we need to be clear. With committees about what um, their responsibilities are and, and, and the legal responsibilities. Like, you know, every meeting has to be open to the public. And you have to take minutes, and you have to post minutes on the website. And so that was really my first clue, was that their minutes weren't getting published. And so. That's some, you know, we really don't have any committees now that are that loose.
I, I mean, I struggle with our sort of ghost role, that we're not really involved. I mean, we're taking notes and a lot of times I'm not given the material before the meetings, and it's not just one committee, it's several. And so I come in sort of behind the eight ball, and I've asked on numerous occasions from, for material. And I've been turned down.
See, and that's not okay.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
Because all, except for the planning board and the board of appeals, which are quasi-judicial. They're, we don't get to weigh in on anything that is.
Saying way in, but I'm just saying, be informed for that.
That's right.
Discussion.
Um, but. All the other committees are advisory to this board. So their whole existence is so that they can dive into issues. Like the cemetery committee can spend a lot more time discussing green burials or the orientation of graves. Or the cost of all those things, and then bring recommendations to us, and we can just. Approve policies, but you know, if Tammy's at the cemetery committee. I think any of us as a liaison should feel free to ask questions, to get clarification. If you know from the select board that something that they're talking about is not likely to fly. Like this happened during the comprehensive plan committee. There were people that were very strongly interested in. Regulating um, short-term rentals. And so I at least was able to say, well, look, look at the surveys. You know, only forty-seven percent of the people wanted to do that, number one. And number two, I knew the select board, the current select board, was not gonna be enthusiastic about that. So, you know, fine, feel free to bring a recommendation, but just know that these are the realities. So I do think. That in your role as a liaison, you should feel free to share, ask questions, make comments. Because otherwise. You know, they're wasting a chance to know how you think, and you're gonna be one of the five people that vote. you know, they're wasting a chance to know how you think and you're gonna be one of the five people that votes in the end.
I know, but sometimes people don't want that. I mean, there's a whole psychological component to it. Or maybe it's just me.
No, it isn't you.
I I don't know, but I, you know, I feel, sometimes I feel pushback. And I and and I stay quiet because people have let me know, well, Richard Bates didn't do that or something like that. And I thought, okay, all right. So, um, yeah.
Well, I actually had somebody say to me in a committee, you're just the liaison. And I said, that's true, but do you wanna waste time talking about something that when it comes to the Select Board, you're gonna get voted down? Or do you want me to tell you right now that I think these are questions the Select Board is gonna have?
I mean, I understand that. I think what I'm talking about is a, for me, a little bit more nuanced that it's not like black and white. There's some gray areas.
Right.
And maybe, and as I sit there, because I haven't had the material, I don't know that this is something that's progressed for years. And I'm coming in at a certain point saying, wait a minute, I don't think you wanna do that. And that's not cool either for me to do that. So I just, maybe I'm just struggling how to figure out my place with the with the committees. Brandon, do you wanna give me some words of wisdom or something that?
No, I mean, I I think there is a lot of nuance to the role. I think it it's hard to not be a fully participating member when you're at every committee, but I do think there is structure that prevents that. And then there's times where if you were, like Jane has said, if you are order adhere to that so strictly, you would allow them to waste a whole meeting on something that, you know, maybe the Select Board has already taken a stance on or voted on.
Right, right.
Or whatever it may be. But, you know, I think the biggest thing is making sure, one, like Jane said, they know what is like legally required of them, right? That we we are the ones that are, you know, vulnerable to, you know, follow requests. And you know, if there's documentation that's not being done. But then I also think even just now that, things like the Planning Board, this isn't true for, but like Cemetery Committee, now that it is like revamped and is re-energized, like like we still have some learning about what their role is, you know? Like when they send a request, you know, like, oh, well, we think that the town should pay for cutting the trees down and well, you know, you know, there's no. And so tho- those types of things are really, I think, what.
But to your to your question about, I mean, I think that it's entirely appropriate for a Select Board member to ask questions. So Brian's gonna come in to the Harbor Committee.
And be provided the documents because.
Be provided.
Can't be a full liaison if you don't have all of the material.
So that's something that I can communicate with all of the chairs about that.
It's a good idea.
That they need to send the um background stuff that's gonna be discussed at each meeting to the liaison. And you know, I think about Brian going to the Harbor Committee. Obviously, the Port Glide Landing Project is, you know, ninety-eight percent finished. But if they had a meeting tomorrow, it's entirely reasonable for him to say, so why are we doing it this way? Or what decision has been made? And okay, so they have to bring somebody up to speed, but we're the ones that were elected to and are accountable for how things are being run. And to not be able to ask a question would just be nuts. So, um and I do think the Cemetery Committee is a good example of helping a committee understand the budget issues. And, you know, the committees are so different because, for example, with emergency services, that committee has a lot of people who actually get paid by the town that are involved in that committee. And and we have a lot of employees that are working on those issues. But then, like, the Conservation Commission has zero staff people. Zero. So, or resilience. You know, so those committees are doing a lot of work than in a bigger commu- municipality. There would be paid people doing the work. And so I think the challenge for those committees is that they have been very independent. And they're used to kind of, they think of themselves as like, we're the ones that do the trails and make the decisions and and decide how much to be spent on something. But they need to keep in mind that it's the Select Board that'll make those final decisions. And of course, their recommendations are likely to be approved by this group, but um, so I do think it's more challenged. It's challenging with those committees that are used to running their own show. But then I look at the Emergency Services Committee, it's challenging for different reasons cuz there are so many, you know, fingers in the pie that you're kind of like trying to corral the group. So, and I think um for reporting back, what would be helpful is um any kind of, anything that is gonna come to this group as a decision, keep us posted. So like, the Solid Waste Committee is is or was discussing changing the hours or um fees for things. Let us know that that's what they're talking about. So that even if it's not time to make a decision, like that's just on our radar.
But I also think anything that, as liaison, we think is of interest to the board is.
Yes.
Can count, e- even if it's, even if it's never coming to us.
Right.
Still might be something we wanna be aware of.
Right.
I I have to say that the uh Conservation Commission is a model committee. I feel welcome, comfortable there. I can ask questions. They sometimes ask questions of me, which I sometimes can answer, sometimes not. But um, yeah, I find it it's pretty enjoyable, but it may be that that committee's just I'm lucky or that co- committee is a commissioner.
Has a wonderful chair for one thing.
Yes.
But I I think that that for.
We have wonderful chairs.
We do. Particularly where there's going to be expenditures. You know, like contracts entered into. Or, you know, we're thinking, you know, buying a piece of property or accepting a donation or whatever kinds of things like that. You know, we need to be in the loop and make sure the Select Board isn't gonna hear something later.
Okay.
Is the Planning Board separate of the Select Board where it's a board instead of a committee?
Well, the Planning Board has two jobs. The the job where the liaison is just gonna sit there and listen to what goes on is when they're sitting as judges for a subdivision approval or something like that. But the other job they have is to um weigh in on or draft land use ordinances for us. So, you know, like two years ago, there was a little subcommittee of Michael Jordan, Ann Cox, I was on it, and Terry Brackett. And Michael did most of the work. But, you know, they revamped all of the whole land use ordinance for the town and we all voted on it. But that's why we've gone to them, for example, you know, the houses that are falling down, to say, should we have an ordinance about unsafe buildings? And they came back and said, well, they think the state ordinance is good enough. We just need to enforce it. And obviously, I think if this group felt differently, like we need an ordinance, a land use ordinance for something, we could task them with doing that. Which we did ask them to look at short-term rentals and they said they didn't want to. Which, you know, and then that's another question. I think if they're, if a group said we're too busy, then we'd have to figure out some ad hoc group to do something like that, but.
Are they sort of separate of the Select Board?
Well, they are when they're sitting as judges.
Like the school board. They're separate of, we don't tell them what to do, they don't tell us what to do.
It's true with, for in each of those examples, for the Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, and the school board, that for certain responsibilities, they have exclusive authority, but not for everything. Uh, they all have some fall under the bigger umbrella of the town.
Certainly.
Yeah, even the school because it's a municipal school unit and that's the part that, you know, is a little less than clear. But so, but like the Planning Board and the Board of Appeals, there's still town committees, you know, if we have, we pay Judy or, you know, lawyers.
And appoint the members.
We appoint the members, but we couldn't, we couldn't overrule things they decide. We have no authority to do that. So so those are different. And then, you know, like Parks and Rec talk about committees that have kind of done their own thing. You know, they do.
And it works.
They, right. So.
Know what they're doing and they do it well.
But I think with the new um facility, there are gonna be decisions that are gonna have to be made by this group. And so um that's where they'll come up with some ideas and Brandon and Brian and I have talked about having a little team of people that could put together, figure out what things are gonna cost there and do we wanna have a fundraising campaign to raise money separately to pay for some of that. But obviously, the Parks and Rec Committee people would provide a lot of input to that. And I guess the only last thing I wanted to say about um the committee thing was like with everything else. Let's, hopefully, we don't have things come at us at the last minute. But if we have forewarning that decisions are coming from committee stuff, you know, that's the best practice. We do, we are supposed to um pick a date when we will invite all the committee chairs to come. Um, and so I think well, last year we had them come in August. So we'll look at a a date in August and and do that.
Will the Harvard Master grill hot dogs and burgers with tarot?
I hope I feel volunteer for that again. That was um.
That was so much work.
It was a big hit for sure.
It was a big hit.
They all went.
Did, I assume we paid for the what they cooked.
We did, it was in that word.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if um was the, we were gonna pay for the band too, but that, I didn't see that in the warrant, was it?
We, he has not invoiced us.
Okay, all right. So, wow, uh, money well spent, that.
I agree.
All the people that worked to make that a wonderful party and to make the landing happen deserved a good party.
Your August meetings are the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. If you wanted to pick a date now to invite chairs to.
That might be a good idea.
Do people have a preference?
We need to find at least two new chairs, so.
Well, um, so Richard Bates has stepped down from the Emergency Services Committee. Usually, the committees elect their own chair, just like we did here. But um, so what was the other committee? Oh, well, obviously Parks and Rec.
Oh, so three, uh, Harbors.
Oh, yes, Dan let us know that he's stepping down. But um, I would think that the Parks and Rec and Harbor Committee folks could choose their own chairs.
Parks and Rec has a vice chair.
Yeah.
And I think they switch it up and they re-vote in September for new officers, so I would assume she'll just step up.
Okay.
For the next month or so. I worry the entire Harbor Committee is about to step.
Well, I emailed them about that today and said, I really hope that for continuity's sake, they won't all step down.
But it could blame them.
I know, but. They're not gonna have nearly the need to meet so often. So hopefully, some of them will be willing to stay on. We'll see. I did suggest that Dan have one final meeting for and figure out who's staying on, who's not, and pick a chair from the people. So hopefully, he could, they can do that. So we'll make sure you, I told him that you were gonna be
Yeah.
Their liaison. So, yes, we we definitely have, it's that time of year because um the ad hoc committees, which includes the TIF, Resilience and Emergency Services, those are all, everybody's one-year appointment, so they'll they'll all have to be. Um, let us know if they're gonna continue. And um and all the committees are supposed to have an organizational meeting in July after our fiscal year starts. Which for the last couple of years has been the only meeting the Board of Appeals ever has cuz they they haven't had any appeals. And good, yes, saves money cuz appeals are, we have to pay lawyers and it's expensive. Not to mention challenges of decisions are uncomfortable. So, um, oh, St. George Days update. So we had a meeting today and we're um everything is moving along really well as far as that is. If you look at the community calendar, have all of you found where that is? So if you go on the town website and you go to, at the far right, it says Discover St. George. And you click on that, the first thing in the menu is Community Calendar. And it's a link to a calendar that John Malte's set up. And something like twenty-five groups in town, at least, their calendars are on there. It's not things like the internal meetings of the Wiley's Corner Grange, but if they're public server, it's up there. Or so, and there's a, there's a uh button on there for St. George Days. And a number of the events are on there and tomorrow I'll put more on there now that I know.
I've already heard a couple of um people say how how much they like that. They think it's a great service. It's like, oh, I didn't know all this was going on.
Right. I know, somebody said to me, you know, oh, Alice Forman's giving a talk at the library. You know, and you just think, well, you you could have looked at the library website, but it's really great to have everything that's happening in one place.
I don't believe you can access it from your phone, which is above.
Oh, that's true.
Like I don't, I can't even find the, well, through the app. I haven't tried through the webpage on my phone. I don't see them, they call them on the webpage. Okay. I haven't tried super hard either.
Well, I'm sure that they can fix that. So I would bring it up to Bill and John because for.
The app is missing a bunch of our pages. It's much, it's harder to navigate.
On phone, on a phone versus
Yeah.
On a laptop or something. Yes, that was a wonderful community service that John Malte and Bill Batty did for all of us. So Town Managers Report.
Uh, some tax-acquired property update. Um, Irene sent out letters. I don't know how long ago now, six weeks, two months? It's in April.
Not not a long have been notified.
Right, which is what what I was getting to. Um, they all came back, uh, returned, which means, and so then I got advice from our attorney around what the next process is and uh, so I've been trying to visit the properties and um I've not been able to reach anyone yet. And so on my third visit, I will, you know, tack it up to the door. Not all of the properties have doors, so uh, or houses even, you know, so that is a little tough.
But I'm sure the law provides a procedure for those, right? Like public notice or something in a paper?
Uh, no, they don't uh provide that clear of a procedure, actually.
That's surprising.
But I have, you know, the advice from Bill.
Yeah, good.
So. Uh, so we're working on that, um but.
But it's taking longer to get them listed because until they've all received these legal notices, you can't list them at the Realtor, right?
Yeah, for they.
And you have to give them notice.
I've at least gone through all the legal requirements for the effort to reach the.
Almost, not quite. I need to, you know, make another trip. Almost, not quite, I need to, you know, make another trip. Yeah, and then, you know, hang them up, so. And I've been documenting, you know, when I've gone to visit properties and.
Well, you'll know.
Understand why nobody ever did anything about them, but. But it's important and necessary, so.
And it's money we're owed and will, and will recoup.
Right, and why would anyone pay their property taxes if nothing ever happened if you did it, so. So, you know, we would stick with it.
How many properties did we start with and how many people got it taken care of and how many are left that? Like you're trying to notify the final.
Well, I've been here four years, I think we have one more property now than we did when I started. Because we've, once word got out that we had hired a real estate agent. There was some folks that. Came in and paid their bill. Um, and those property, one of them is. Probably going to get tax acquired again. The end of this. This year. Because nothing has been paid.
We have a very long list and so we're currently. Only focusing on the ones that have been tax acquired for more than five years.
Right.
And um, within your first five years, there's like another challenge, uh, or like appeal process that you are entitled to. Um, which was part of the reason too to decide to, because we have such a long list already.
So roughly how many are, are eligible?
In that five, seven, is it seven in the five year?
I think so. I think there was five letters that I sent out. But there, I think there's two that. The owner has passed away and didn't leave a will.
So, and potentially seven could be listed with, with the broker if, if we.
Working on, there's, in, you know. Some folks have, there's different interpretations about a deed for another one and so, um. It is, the property is tax acquired, but we may have the wrong owner. And if that's the case, um. The right owner, the correct owner would be very happy to pay the back taxes and, you know, actually get the ownership of it. Because they thought they had it at one point anyway.
Well, that would be a resolution.
There's another property that is an unknown owner, um. And I'm pretty certain I know who thinks they own it because their driveway runs right through it, um, but I, they're just not up for the season and so I have not been able to. Contact, so there are a few that I think will be resolved, um.
And I, I did reach out to the state, um, the unclaimed property division. And the property that, where the gentleman has passed away and didn't leave a will. If we sell that property, we can keep whatever our share is and we can turn the rest over to the state.
Oh.
As unplanned property, so we don't even have to bother keeping records or determining.
Legally.
Has a right to it, it's two kids that. Put up for adoption or his other two kids that he did adopt and. And, you know, we don't have to deal then.
We should get that opinion from them in writing if we're going to do that.
They said that they cannot accept real estate, but they can accept.
The proceeds, yeah.
So once, once we've got it in the form of cash, we can turn it over to them and. Let them do the whole thing.
Well, thank you for that.
Um, the FY twenty-three audit, um, is underway, Irene has been preparing materials that are required for it. And so there is another, uh. Letter from Fred, um. You'll remember you signed one of these for the twenty twenty-two, uh, this is like the engagement letter, outlines sort of his scope of work, this is the. Same letter just for FY twenty-three, so if you all. Are good with it again, uh, I'm happy to sign it and send it back, but if, um. Folks would like to review FY twenty-three's version, I can, um, circulate it.
No, I'm fine.
I'm fine with you signing it.
I'm as glad as going on and get it going.
Um, there are. Uh, these are, uh, the TIF van and Ryan, uh, Ponte, Ponte, um.
Were appointed to.
Tip committee and so just to sign up and that, we'll do that again in about two weeks, uh, because keep in mind this. Committee's up annually, so.
For the rest of the people.
Yeah. And for them.
Well, except we put on here, they've got on here till twenty-six, so they're good till the, for the whole year.
Interesting.
Oh, would you? Just share with the select board about this working waterfront inventory?
Yes, we're part of a cohort of, uh, other communities that are working on it and, um. You know, I have not, I, Ryan and Aaron are working on it with me, I, to be honest, have not been able to give it as much. Focus and attention, um, as I'd like to, uh, it, there's a cohort meeting right before the grand opening, so. Um, that was difficult, but. Uh, you know, essentially it, it is an inventory of. All of your working waterfront in town, not just like the municipal owned, um. Valve and sort of the state and status and, um, helps with some like longer range planning and, and all of that. But I'm still very new and introductory to it, I need to. I've met with, um. Couple of folks from Maine Coast Fishermen's, um, about it, so.
And what, um, what do they hope to do with the inventory, do you know?
I don't know yet.
Yeah, I'll be interested in hearing, because Erin mentioned to me, I meet with her. Now I'll be meeting with her weekly.
A lot of it, you know, it, we used to pursue, um. You know, different types of funding and whatnot, um. And that was really the main use that I heard from it, it's helpful for informing your comp plans and I let them know that we just. Completed ours and so, you know, for ten years from now, if our inventory is. Those are the two main uses that were outlined with.
Well, I know in the comp plan process, Erin, we did identify the marine commercial. Properties in town. And I know when Meg Rasmussen did the working waterfront vulnerability study. That was finished a year ago, February or something. I would assume there'd be some inventory in there too. So, it'll, it'll be interesting to learn more about that. Alright, well, let's.
One other piece that, sorry, didn't make it onto my report, but the, um. Historical Society applied for a BYOB liquor license for their St. George Days event. And so, uh, same one that was run last year, didn't know.
Sign something?
Um, no. Yes, so I guess, I assume that BYOB ones are not done through the state like the rest are now, because those ones I can just sign off on, but, um.
I do remember that we approved it last year, I just don't remember.
You, you did approve it last year.
There's paperwork. Well, I vote that we approve it again. Any discussion? Uh, favor?
Can I vote or not? It would be a conflict of interest.
I don't think there's a conflict.
I know, you don't make any money, you'll have it for yourself.
Well, we don't know that. Well, yeah.
Unless you drink it up.
It's all five of us, um.
You all do need to sign this one, so I will print it up.
You can print it when we're talking about you in a few minutes.
That's what I was thinking.
We'll be watching you.
Alright, so then, let's hope we can zoom through some of these committee reports, planning board.
Alright, planning board, um, the Daiserswood subdivision on Walston has gone a step forward. The application is deemed complete and then there, there's going to be a notice for a public hearing and a notice to a Butters and, um. That'll be the next step, it's not. Fully approved yet. Um, the, there was a public hearing for, um, a new pier on Snow's Point. No one attended, zero, so the public hearing was done in about thirty seconds. Um, and that applicant, application was, um, approved. And, um. There's a couple more pending permits to replace things that were damaged in the storm and they're moving along. The continuum, a, a replacement cabin, um. Owned by the Hoppers was approved, so nothing earth shaking, nothing that's going to require our decision making. Um, the Board of Appeals is having its organizational meeting, we're trying to come up with a day either in July or August. So that'll be a first for me to attend that meeting.
And I should point out that Sandra Roke, the, when people resign from committees, they're supposed to submit.
Yeah.
A resignation to the select board, which usually. They tell their committee chair, but Sandra Roke told me that she would like to step down.
Okay, so I, I've already heard that from Steve Clark, from Steve Miller rather, um. And the resilience committee, um, it has that joint, um, climate action plan project with South Thomistin. So we had our second meeting with them in South Thomistin, the group came up with. A vision statement and a mission statement and they're going to continue meeting, um. To cobble together all the different sections in the climate action plan.
So is that a joint vision for two towns?
It is, it is, and you know, that's, there's lots of things that could make things wobble, like. You know, we talked about whether there's one forum or two forums, one for each town.
Right.
Uh, it's, we'll see how it shakes out, I think there's some. There's some remaining issues, how things are going to go forward, because I can tell just sitting there listening that. I would say our towns are at a different place in terms of the learning curve. And data gathering and, um. Yeah, we'll, we'll have to see how it goes, I don't know, you know, I, I sit there and listen.
I'm, I'm just thinking about the town charter, you know, and what it says about how committees are supposed to function.
Well, is that, and that applies to the ad hoc?
Yes, and the select board policies say that ad hoc committees function in the same way as regular committees.
Okay, so one of the things that happened at that. Joint meeting is it became a workshop because there was not a forum from either town.
Okay.
So, one idea, and I, I didn't say this to them, but one, one idea that I had is that anything that we do together is always a workshop.
I, you know, I think that makes sense because. You can't, we can't decide for South Thomistin anything, I think your committees have to vote on. Steps that require decisions separately, even if you have joint workshops. And there's a consensus.
Problem is there's, there's, but there's one document being created. And one plan being created, so I'll have to think about how that fits into the practicalities. Of running the workshop, coming up with joint language that's signed off by both towns.
I, I think as long as the decision, you know, this came up with that comprehensive plan group because they had a million workshops.
Yeah.
Not a million, but you know.
Right.
Fifty or something, um. And I think that you can have conversations about language, but then when you. Vote, when your town votes, yeah, a- and it's kind of similar to the selfish ordinance with the five towns. You know, we voted, our town voted on us, parallel language. But.
Well, I'll have to make that clear though.
Yeah, I, yeah. I think things that involve decisions by our town have to be made by our town's committee.
Okay.
Even if they spend lots of time with the South Thomas. Alright. The Harvard Committee hasn't met. Budget Committee hasn't met. Emergency Services Committee hasn't met, those are three of mine, huh, um, the TIF Committee. Is, um. They've got a subgroup that's doing some work. Which isn't worth getting into the details of, but they're working hard, so. Damn me. It's too confusing to.
Okay, the cemetery committee met on June sixth, four thirty down in this meeting room. Um, they had a guest speaker, Sarah Oktay.
Yeah, you said it right.
Um, she's talked about sea level rise and how it is related to, um, seaside cemetery and how it's. Eventually going to become an issue where the lower part of the cemetery is. Gets wet during. Regular storms now and. You wanted to do more research on the cemetery, so the group decided that at their next meeting, they're going to have like a. Field trip and they're all going to meet at the cemetery and go down to the lower level and she's going to take a closer look at it to decide. What could happen there and give more information to the cemetery committee and. The Sexton Dawn met with the Green Burial Committee. Last Friday the thirteen. And she's going to report back to the committee at the next meeting about green burials and. Sort of moving forward with that a little bit and they discussed these things called mushroom ca- caskets.
I saw that in the paper.
It looks like a giant mushroom pod, I guess they make them out of mushrooms somehow.
Apparently, that's.
It looks like a, just a big oval pod with a, get in it and there's a cover and then they bury it. You could get in it if you wanted to, it could be like a sleep. But anyway. And it's, goes into the ground and then it. Decomposes and it's part of the green burial.
Well, here's a question that I have.
No, I, you can help me edit that.
By the way, if anyone doesn't know this, it's Sarah Oktay is, uh. The director of the Harrington Learning Center.
And she's very knowledgeable about sea level rise, she said she worked out on Nantucket for twelve years. And she said it's a lot different actually from St. George because of the. It's all sandy out there and here it's a lot of, you know, granite and. Yeah, and clay and different type of soil and she said it's a whole different thing here.
It's a very interesting person, she's written books.
Very knowledgeable.
Yes, very knowledgeable. One thing I wondered about. Not to throw, throw in, uh. With the green burial business. Um. One of the challenges with green burials is. Obviously subsidence of the dirt, you know, if, if you have a casket in there, it's not going to collapse down as much. As, and so that's one of the reasons. That people, that cemeteries don't allow green burials in just like your regular plots. Because otherwise for a moment it's more complicated. And then of course, where we have one so close to the water, there are those questions. I wondered if. If we're, we have acquired the Clark Kill Cemetery. Um, as a tax-acquired property. And that's a place that isn't moaned anyway in the same way, you know. Would that be a possibility for our town green burial location? Just something to.
A vote to retain.
Right.
Right now, they don't have any more property up there to do anything like that, so. They would have to.
Like that cemetery is full, it's not taking.
Oh, it's full? Okay.
But if you, we were to acquire additional property.
Adjacent.
Next to it.
And the all, the whole property is tax-acquired right now. Anything that you, the town wanted to retain to the cemetery or the cemetery plus would require a vote. And then we would have to purchase it for fair market value.
The part that we were.
Yeah.
Wanting to keep.
I have no idea what the fair market value of a cemetery is.
Right, it's probably. Not much.
Right.
Right.
But anyway, this, obviously it's related to the green burial. Programs, it's, it's a long process. To pick where you would have it and then, the, obviously seaside I don't think would be a good location because there's. Houses on both sides, you've got the water here and then the road, so. There's a little wooded area that they, they've mentioned, but I don't think it would be good because it's still near homes and wells and.
So what other committees of yours?
Well, the Recycling Committee is gonna meet June eighteenth at three P M here at the town office. And the Shell Kid, Shellfish Committee meets um, Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, five thirty in Warren.
Alright, um, the Comp Plan Committee did submit the plan to the state, I forgot to mention that. So, and they're saying that they're expecting the state review to be done in early, I guess we'll see. Um, so that's what's happening with that.
Now, with that comp plan, does the state have to submit a comp plan to the federal government? How does that, I got thinking about that today. It's like, does the state have to go through?
No, but I, I'm sure that for particular things, like say your Department of Transportation or something, you might need to submit planning things. But it's different because a state, if the state's raising money to run state operations, you know, they don't.
Interesting, that they come and tell towns that you have to do this. But look how the state's being run right now. I'm sorry to say it's not good.
But the town is a subdivision of the state, it's a creation of the state.
But still, they can't even run their own show, right? They shouldn't be telling us how to run ours.
Well, I'm sure we have.
That's just my opinion.
Different views about that, so we'll just move on. Um, Parks and Rec.
Last meeting, I don't remember the date it was, but pretty much all we talked about was St. George Days. Getting ready for that, doing our concessions up. We had, we decided to add a family-friendly cornhole tournament ahead of the regular cornhole tournament, cause you know, kids, there, there's some pretty serious players. The kids can't get up against, I don't know what we settled on. We're gonna add some more teams to the big one, the adult one, but not as many as we planned on doing. But other than that, with uh, five K races online for registrations and everything's up and running, so.
Hopefully the whole select board will sign up for the regular.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, speaking of the select board signing up for things, um, historically, the select board has not marched in the St. George Days Parade. But at the meeting today, there was a question about whether we would want to do that.
Tell Steve to fire up the truck.
There you go, I'm gonna fire up the truck again.
Yeah, but people are gonna need to ride in the truck with me. Steve was, if we're gonna do it, otherwise it looks goofy to have me and people in the truck.
I like the cap.
Yeah, of course.
And you could be, you know, it'd be appropriate to be a bit more festive.
Yeah, except Wendy was the one stuck with decorating it. Is she willing to be more festive and decorate?
She did a lot of it as well.
Steve did most of it, really, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm willing to ride in the truck if people.
If I'd rather be on a float, not.
Well, I mean, it would be fun, but then it's more work to get a float together and decorated.
We'd take a float out of the harbor.
Actually, I think riding on a float is probably less, it felt very safe and stable, riding in the truck. Um.
Carpeted truck.
Yeah, with the chairs.
Well, what, I don't know, whatever you guys wanna do.
Well, we have to decide something because I need to. Alright, well, think about it, but we have to decide, you know, in time to decorate something if we're riding.
Why can't you decide tonight?
There's still time.
Yeah, so one more meeting, really?
What do you think?
Personally, I'm gonna be pretty busy that day with Parks and Rec.
That's right, you are.
I'll be able to get up to parade, I'm sure.
Yeah, see, that's, that's.
I'd actually thought of driving one of my antique vehicles in the parade, so then I wouldn't be on the truck.
How many people would fit in it?
Right?
It's not, not as safe for a car.
Well, like, sounds like clown car coming up the road, that would be good, we could dress like clowns.
Maybe we stick with our uh, not doing it then.
Sounds good.
Um, I, this, I, I probably should have brought this up earlier, but I wanna invite everyone to take a tour of the Water District. But we've, we've invited people before and no one showed up. So I just wanna see if there's any interest in going there and going through the treatment plant. It doesn't take long. Alright, now how about we do it in, July sounds busy. So how about we try to come up with a date in August? And the engineers will take us through. And I may invite, like if the Solid Waste Committee wants to come, I don't know if there's, and, and Cash, if your group wants to come. Um, so, yeah.
Good idea.
I mean, we've, we've done this like three times and um, nobody showed up. So when I brought it up again this year, I was mocked. Nobody's gonna show up, but.
We have some people like Sarah Okte and David Brockie. And you know, there are people who are interested in water quality issues.
Okay.
And, you know, that was in the comp plan, wasn't it?
I mean, the plan itself is like, it's a smaller sized version of a full treatment plant. But all you're gonna see are pipes and tanks. You're not gonna see anything.
But you can describe what's happening.
They, the engineers will, yeah, the engineers.
Did they advertise this event in the past?
Well, I did, I did, and no one showed up.
Did they have a sign out by the road?
No, because we don't want riffraff. I mean, there's certain.
Terrorist attack.
Well, I mean, there is, there are things about, you know, homeland security issues that we don't advertise that that's where the treatment plant is, so. But you'll all be signing in ocean blood. I, I, I. No, but if there's true interest, I'll come back with a couple of days and see. Um, now what if it's during the day? Can you?
Would you do it during?
Like, it would probably be on a weekday, cause that's when our engineers work. So could you come if I gave you enough warning? Yeah, okay. Cause it might be like on a Thursday morning. They're usually at the treatment plant then. Okay, alright, I'll set up with some dates, I'll, in conjunction with them and I'll come back to you guys and see if you wanna.
Okay.
If it works. You can call.
Ken, we, the only committee we haven't talked about is the Conservation Commission. You wanna give us a report?
You're muted.
Alright, um, before I talk about what we had our last meeting, I just wanna go back and make a comment about the discussion you had about uh, committees and responsibilities. And you were talking about budgets and so forth. And, you know, we're one of the few committees that has a budget, but doesn't have a town employee on the committee for administering that, which I think every other committee does. Maybe the Cemetery Committee doesn't now either. Um, but it would, it would really restrict us what we could do if we had to come back to the select board every time we wanna purchase something. So traditionally, we've gone through Brandon to do that. And whenever we wanna purchase something, um, we go back through Brandon to do that. And Brandon has given us authority up to a certain level to go ahead and do it, as long as it's in our budget. So I think that's been, that's been a workable situation, you know, in our circumstance, you know, at this point in time. So I just thought that was worth pointing out when you were having that discussion.
Yes, um, but, and that is, it's a good point for you to raise. But you have a good relationship with Brandon and the select board is clear on things that, you know, the budget includes and what you're gonna be doing. And so I think, or there are, the resilience committee is similar to your committee in not having a town employee who's, you know, um, sort of monitoring that budget line, but they.
They don't really have a budget line, do they?
Yes, they do.
The resilience committee?
No, the con- conservation.
Conservation does, yes, but resilience doesn't. So that's what, that's where there's a little bit of difference is that there's no line for them to spend, you know? Projects that we would fund through, you know?
The resilience committee has their fourth grant that they've written and gotten approved. And then they're spending that.
Right.
So even though the money wasn't allocated by the public, you know, it's um.
Right, just wanted to point out the one, the one difference there.
Right.
Right, Ken is a commission that is managing an actual, you know, budget line raised by taxes.
Yeah, right.
Excuse me?
Could you give us a little update? Cause I left my notes at home.
Sure, sure.
I'll get my homework.
Well, we had a meeting last Thursday, um, and we've, we had, uh, we even had some, we have a, a regular people there from the committee. We had a G R L T representative there and we had a vol- one of our volunteers who has now um, agreed to become a member of the committee for this next year. So we'll be working on that and submitting an update of the committee members uh, after our next meeting. We did receive an email, a number of emails, but I think the significant one was from Ann Boover when she was down at Fort Point after the last storm. Uh, we had recently done a fair amount of work to repair the damage from the winter storms. And then that Saturday that had the two inches of rain, we did have some more damage to the trails after that, which we've since repaired again. Um, and hopefully it's gonna stick this time. Uh, it, what it did point out to us though is that maintaining a universal access trail takes a bit more work than the other trails in town, where you just worry about taking care of blowdowns and trimming back the brush on the sides of the trail. Um, so it's just worth mentioning. Um, the other thing, both Dale and I have been invited by Rob Kelly to attend the um, housing meeting that's occurring tomorrow and Wednesday. Um, because they wanna talk about possible portion of that project uh, being in conservation or trails. Um, so we'll, we'll hear some more about that tomorrow. Um, Fort Point Project, we got some good news finally on the, the funding, the reimbursement. Um, just before our meeting, I get, received an email from the state saying they now have the money from the feds. And now it's within their control to issue that final reimbursement payment. So hopefully that's gonna happen within the next couple of weeks. I've been telling you that a long time, but I think this time it's really gonna happen.
That's great.
And um, on Oldwoods Farm Preserve, we've still been working to get the various documents in order. Um, here's an example where when you're working with four different groups, with four different lawyers, it takes a while to get everyone to approve all the documents. Um, so you know, with the L M F has a lawyer, the town has a lawyer, G R L T has a lawyer, and the H O A has a lawyer. Um, so I think Ann, all those documents are a bit intertwined. So each one, one of them, they depend on each other to a certain extent. Um, but I think once we get those done, then we can apply to get our reimbursement uh, from L M F for the um, purchase of the, of the property. Um, an item that got brought up, oh, I guess on trails, we put a couple of benches that was built by Dick Pelletier at Fort Point. And we've received a number of compliments about those benches being there. And in fact, Ann Boover, one day she was there, she met a number of people, someone in a wheelchair, someone else with a, with a walker type device. And they really appreciated having the benches along the trail now. So that was some, some good feedback that we received there. Um, a bit ago, not this past meeting, but the meeting before, David Taylor from the Shellfish Committee, maybe Tammy knows David.
Yes, yes.
Um, he, he came to, to talk about uh, dog feces polluting the river and is concerned about that, at Fort Point, ca- causing that problem uh, because dogs walk out there. Um, we've since found that the dog poop doesn't really create pathogens in the water. But it does affect uh, high levels of nitrogen and phosphate coming from the certain brands of dog food. So I think we're still looking to get some more detailed information from the Shellfish Committee before we, we do anything. They wanted us to put up some signs that, you know, we, they've apparently put up in cushion already where they were, if, if people didn't comply with picking up their dog waste, that they would have to close their trails there. Um, so it's just, I don't know, Tammy, have you heard much about that?
Um, they did put up some signs and I don't know how they're working out, but I'm gonna, when I go to the next meeting, I'm gonna mention to them that you would like more information before you move forward with any signage or anything like that.
Right, I think we, they, they presented some data, but it was several years old in terms of the data that they presented in the water quality um, testing that they've done. Um, I guess the next big thing is we have that uh, event planned in July. Um, a state entomologist is coming down and it'll be at Fort, at Fort Point to talk about the ash trees and the Emerald Ash Borer of impact on the ash trees. And uh, we've decided to do that in uh, cooperation with Georgia's River Land Trust. It turned out they wanted, they sent to us a note that they wanted to have a similar event at Fort Point because there's a fair number of ash trees there. Um, so we'll have that event there with them being co-sponsors and they'll also publish it. But then they'll still have their event that they wanna have in August, but they'll find another venue to, to hold their event separately. Um, I think that, that's the, the major things that have been ongoing. Oh, we did, we did take an initial exploratory walk on the scouting property last Friday. Um, and we have some ideas, we'll have to do some more work there. And um, hopefully we'll be hearing back through Wednesday whether we'll be allowed to put a trail across the Water District, which would then allow us to connect Oldwoods Farm to the scouting property.
The scouting property, not the one up near Wiley's Corner, but the one near the Water District and off Walston.
Right, that's correct. And we did, we did go on to um, part of the town property for the, for where the, the old dump is and where the transportation is. And um, there might be some viable areas to have a trail back there as well. The um, the back portion of the scouting property is difficult to get to because of the wetlands from the property that's closer to the road. But it looks like it'd be viable to access that through the transportation property. So that's all initial exploration at this point, nothing definite. It'll take a while to figure out exactly what we wanna do.
Alright, well, we look forward to hearing more about that.
Thanks for the great report.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So we do need to um, enter into executive session. Is there any other um, regular business for tonight? I think the only thing is we, we will, we've already approved and we will sign the auditor's letter when you bring it down.
The liquor license.
Oh, the liquor license, sorry. Um, so everybody can, will close down the.